...
Okay, I'm gonna move on. So, I'm proud and excited to introduce our first presentation tonight. A few weeks ago, I came here at School 18 to... I was invited to help out with the after-school program. Kids First put in a lot of work with us in all of our schools, all our elementary schools for after-school programs, the partnership for internships at the high school and work development programs. But I got to watch the karate here at School 18, and I was so impressed that I talked to Mr. Rounds and Mr. Conley about bringing them here tonight. So, I welcome Mr. Tony Butler and his team and the students who are not only from 18, but 18, 16, and Carroll Hill. They're awesome. So, sorry.
I'd like to thank the Black Series of... You've got a loud voice. I'd like to thank the superintendent and the superintendent and the school board. And all parents are being here. Because you know without you, we don't have this. And it's wonderful to see so many people turn out at your place. Remember, when you have something, you make wonderful parents. This is wonderful. Give your parents a hand. We've got a very short time, and we have to be going on. But I'd like everyone to introduce yourself to the superintendent and the school board. Begin.
My name is Zara. I'm nine years old and I go to school at 18.
My name is Freya. I'm nine years old and I go to school at 18.
My name is Atlantis. I'm nine years old and I go to school at 18.
My name is Arshad. I'm nine years old and I go to school at 18.
My name is Lutzer. I'm six years old and I go to school at 18.
My name is Mason. I'm eight years old and I go to Carroll Hill.
We're family. And what is family? Family. What is it?
Wow!
Then what is love?
Family!
So, we can understand that family is this wonderful thing? Isn't it?
It's awesome.
Yes. You know, I enjoy coming to see my students. I've got my coat, something here, and a blue yellow belt to say age and board with everyone, how they interact. But I have a couple of questions. Maybe helping out. What does Domo Oriado design star? Very good.
Very good.
Very good. And that's... That's Japanese term, "yay", correct?
Awesome.
Yeah, of course. I like that. Yours is... "Osh" means "what"? Yes. So, we try to give them terminology in Japanese. Because power is what?
Power.
What is it?
Power!
Power is "now". Yeah. Can no one take this? Correct?
Awesome.
So, if Domo Oriado designed star is saying "very much", how do we say "you are very welcome"? Everyone?
Jovi Dashi to stay.
Jovi Dashi to stay. And the "ba", correct?
Awesome.
Yeah. I can't do a new word. I don't think about this word. What was it? Just said it again. Everyone, "my, my, ah, all day every day." "My, no, all day every day." Do you know what that means? When we get up in the morning, we keep this up. Keep this up. And not just "ah". Oh. Because sometimes we get a little lazy, especially getting up in the morning, coming to school. We can't do that. Because we know that this is what? "My, my, spirit."
Very good.
I'm gonna turn it over to Sensei Gaby.
This is the most meaningful word in the department. This is what has to be.
So, my name is... I'm not gonna tell you how old I am. I have some quick little teachings to students at five North Hill Elementary Schools in Charlotte, along with my sister, Jeanne. We are filled. It was a little rough beginning with these kids. What you're gonna see tonight may be a little easy, but it can be very difficult. So, first of all, I think you gathered, what type of karate do we study?
Kabbis.
So, let's count to ten in Japanese with the school board. "Osh".
Awesome. "Ich, ni, sa, shi, go, ro, si, chi, achi, kure, juu."
Okay, there's also some other basic terminology that these kids hear every day. "Kioskei". Freya, what does "kioskei" mean?
Good.
Good. Great. Mason, what does "ray" mean?
Back.
Nice. "Yoi". Atlantis, what does "yoi" mean?
Ready, set.
Very nice. Okay, now follow my commands. "Osh".
Awesome.
Right leg back. Zan, put your left hand knee on the right. "Osh". Ah! Hey!
Ah!
Good. You start on count, you're gonna step, then you're gonna punch your key eye. "Osh". Ah! Ready, "ich".
Ah!
Ni.
Ah!
Sa.
Ah!
Shi.
Ah!
Go!
Ah!
Reap up.
Ah!
Si, chi.
Ah!
Achi.
Ah!
Now, we're in really tight quarters, you guys, so let's be careful on your "matei". "Osh".
Awesome.
Prepare your "matei". "Matei". Hey!
Ah!
Ah! And just a little bit over there. Very nice. Okay, now when we come back, you're gonna show the school board your "lobo". "Osh".
Awesome.
Prepare your hands. Two, 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 two. Ready, "ich".
Ah!
Prepare. Ni.
Ah!
Prepare. Sa.
Ah!
Prepare. Shi.
Ah!
Prepare. Go!
Ah!
Prepare. Reap.
Ah!
Prepare. Si.
Ah!
Now, prepare "matei". "Matei" needs to turn. "Matei". Hey!
Ah!
And our back leg becomes our front leg. "Osh".
Ah!
Norae. Back to ready position. "Kioskei". Great. So, there's three things these kids have to do to earn their "nei". Not only in our karate program, but given to them, they earn everything that you see here. So, can you tell me one of the things that you have to do to earn your "nei"? That would... How to stand in Japanese. Stand by themselves in Japanese. Freya?
Yeah, I can. "Nei" and "ka".
You have to be able to do your "ka" with what you see a minute. Atlantis?
Yeah, I can do it still in Korean.
And you need to know the student decree with who you cite, you know, and you need to have a "ka" in it at hand in class. "Osh". Now, when you can do those three things with instruction, you need your "nei" and a weight belt. As you can see, these guys have not weighed belts. So, what did you have to do differently to get a colored belt? Hudson? You remember? No? Atlantis?
Yeah, I can do it by myself.
You had to do your "ka" all by yourself. Which can be very tricky. "Osh". What you just saw in basics are the three things that they need to learn in order to do their "ka". "Osh". So, we are just gonna spread you out a little bit. No, stay up. Hudson, step back. Freya, step back. Now, we have a little challenge for you. The first "ka" that is in the form of a letter and an alphabet. So, we're gonna see which one of you can pick out when that letter is. "Osh". All right. Here we go. "Kioskei". Great. And we teach the students to progression. So, when they're first learning their "ka", we give them a lot of cues. And I'll show you what that looks like. Tuck your left leg. Tuck your left leg. Good. Tuck your left leg. Prepare your hands. Ready, "ich". Ni. Tuck your front leg. Prepare your hands. Front, behind, back. "Ich". Ni. Coming down the middle. Tuck your front leg. Prepare your hands. Ready, "ich". Ni. San, shei, pi, ah! Good. Prepare. "Ich". Ni. Prepare. "Ich". Ni. Prepare. Back down the middle. "Ich". Ni. San, shei.
Ah!
Prepare. Back leg spins. "Ich". Ni. Prepare. Front, behind, back. "Ich". Ni. And your "re".
Hey, go.
All right, we're gonna do it one more time. And the reason we're doing it one more time is because I can show you the progression. These kids, I hope you can tell them what leg moves or how to prepare their hands now. Because they have a colored belt, they did this "ka" all by themselves already several times. So, this time, I'm just gonna count. I'm not gonna give you cues. "Osh".
Awesome.
"Kioskei". Great. Tuck your left leg. Tuck your left leg. Good. Prepare your hands. Ready, "ich". Ni. "Ich". Ni. "Ich". Ni. San, shei.
Ah!
Ni. "Ich". Ni. "Ich". Ni. San, shei.
Ah!
Ni. "Ich". Ni. Norae. All right. Capital "mi". They use twice. That's all. No problem. What? Capital "la". Capital "la" is your first "ka". It's a lot of... All right, now, you see Arshad, who's 21, he's been our leader for a couple of years now, right? And Arshad is very patient with us because of how he can catch other kids off. But as you can see, he's yellow belt. He's a senior. He knows "lobo". He knows all the basics. And he knows three "ka" not just one. So, he's gonna show you his third "ka" right now. "Osh". "Kioskei". Great. Natural "ka".
Yar, yar.
"Yoi". Begin when you're ready. So, as you can see in that "ka", he did a lot of things. He goes through the high school students, even middle area, even high area, people on the opposite. There are all things that are a little advanced for seven and eight-year-olds. "Osh". All right, so we're gonna finish our presentation with our student decree. "Seiza". Give it to Arshad. Freya is gonna recite the student decree and all our classes with the student decree. This is really the most important part of our program. It teaches them how to live. And we hope that their parents and their teachers are seeing difference in students and in karate. "Osh". Give it to Freya.
I will build myself in positive hands.
I will build myself in positive hands.
In order anything that can produce my mental growth and physical health.
In order anything that can produce my mental growth and physical health.
I will build self-discipline.
I will build self-discipline.
In order to bring out the best in myself and others.
In order to bring out the best in myself and others.
I will be compassionate for students.
I will be compassionate for self-learners.
And never give these more lessons.
And never give these more lessons.
This is a black belt school.
This is a black belt school.
We are training.
We are training.
We are honing.
We are honing.
We are blessed to be our best.
We are blessed to be our best.
"Osh".
Before we can back out, before we back out, I just like to say we have over ninety students in all of our schools. Over ninety. And they're so blessed to have this program. How many in the school? How many students have a program like this in the elementary school? So, this is phenomenal. And again, we thank so much for all of us who work with you. Parents, we thank you so much. What do we say, "hey"?
"Hey, teacher!"
Now, what do we say?
"Domo Oriado designed star".
And we turn to our sponsor.
"Osh".
The sponsor. And we turn to us. And we say, "one". "Domo Oriado designed star". They give you your "nei" back. "Jovi".
"Jovi".
"Dashi".
"Dashi".
"Kosei".
"Kosei".
There you go.
Great job. Thank you.
Good job.
Before we move to our meeting of the parents, we can say, if you want to be on the server in the audience. Thank you. That's the sign of the presentation. School 18 for the school presentation.
All right, follow.
Yeah. Don't start yelling.
No, you can't.
You can't act. They don't act. All right, so, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here at School 18 tonight. Thank you for the annual opportunity to represent School 18 and speak about the wonderful things that take place here because of all the people that work here. As you know, everything's a team. It's a team sport, okay? So, none of us are working aside because we can't accomplish anything alone. So, all that I want to share with you this evening is because of the teachers, the parent professionals, and all the staff that are coming here every single day. This Halloween, you know, we always stress out. And we have a... You know, we have a theme that is shared with the team. So, they got to choose what football team they wanted to be. And then they thought we found it. Lucy, Don, and I were referees. So, we had a great day celebrating Halloween, but also doing something fun together. And because we work together, because we make decisions based on what's best for children through our practice. And that's why we can show progress. That's why we think our children enjoy coming to school and learning and working with our families. It's all about relationships, all right? So, the relationships we have with our families, our children, and each other help propel us forward and help our children tomorrow. So, I have a lot here. It's going to be quickly, I promise, but I overdo things sometimes. So, you know, you can be a little if you like to. So, anyhow. We always begin... We always begin with our district. I have a ton of examples in the evening. All right, so if you can't hear me, let me know. We always begin with the district mission. The Troy City School District will provide a strong educational and social foundation to graduate both students out in career readiness. Then we go on to our School 18 vision. This is where we do for our second conference and we have adjusted and made better our school vision. School 18 exists to provide equitable learning opportunities to meet the diverse needs of each student. We are committed to creating an environment that allows students to realize and reach their full potential, while, "osh", make a lifelong love of learning. Our demographic, we have 319 students. We have a variety of students here. We brought our multilevel language learners. We have a variety of students with various needs and also promise and talent. And we have students who come to school that need actual support from us that we will talk about throughout the presentation. Or I will talk about that week. Sorry. So, we're going to move on to curriculum and instruction, but assessments, of course, in there. So, we come to school each day to make sure that we are teaching the New York State Learning Standards. All right, the New York State Learning Standards, they articulate what students should know and be able to do as a result of the skilled instruction in the subject areas of the grade levels. So, our teachers are teaching Tier One New York State Standards every single day. And the resources that they're using are resources that, through Dr. Watson's leadership and a variety of supports and that you've approved, those resources that we use to teach the standards are stated above. We have, you know, our reading math square for Lucy Puffins, Unicef Study for Reading and Writing, and phonics. We have our Carolina sinus and sinus. And the PNW Social Studies. We also have supplemental materials that are listed above as well. Part of the work with the resources, so we have these wonderful materials, but we have to make sure that our teachers are expert at using them. So, there are a couple of ways we ensure that. You, thank you, have provided us with instructional coaches. I'm fortunate enough to have two instructional coaches that have been with me since the beginning, since the beginning of this initiative. So, they have built relationships with the teachers in this building. And they work with the teachers weekly. They do embedded coaching cycles with the teachers. They run data meetings, and they are doing collaborative planning. So, they will do things. So, in addition to the coaches being here each and every day, we also have the good fortune to have professional embedded development from the resources, from the Unicef Study, Moss Blower, from Eureka Math. They come, and they're teaching all of us the greatest techniques and the best ways to make sure that we're meeting all of the students' needs that are in front of us. So, those are two ways in which we are ensuring that we're teaching the state standards to all of our children, regardless of the level that they're working on at the Tier One level through the resources that we have all the grades using. And then we have our coaches, and we have professional help that's helping us become more and more expert every day, every week, every year. Just an example, you have it in front of you. I thought it would be nice for you to know that this is an example of a 4-3 reading unit. We call our "E.L.A." stuff "units". So, this is an example of where, in this particular unit, the teacher could look at this. It's located in the Moss Blower website, webpage, that we have a treasure test to, treasure test to and all that. And it shows the teachers exactly what standards they're teaching when they're teaching these units of study. So, I wanted you to see the correlation and the tie-in between the required state standards and the materials and resources that we're using and the expertise of our teachers and how we get them to always stay on the cutting edge. And then, of course, we can't be mapped out. Maps are modules. So, here, the modules, you will see that located right in in there of the state standards that the teachers are teaching in this 3rd grade math country. So... Well, now assessments. I'm going to briefly talk about state assessments, district assessments, what we do with the assessments to make decisions about future instruction. So, this is like eight years of School 18 test results. We continue... What you'll see is there's a trajectory here. We continue to go up. Sometimes we kind of let hand out. We might go down a teenager, but then we catch up and grow even more. So, that's due to all that I've stated so far and the teacher's dedication to the profession. We have a new assessment this year, and I heard you learned all about it in School 14, so I'm not gonna get into it, if you're all right. But I am going to report out that we're currently wrapping up our second diagnostic. So, we have about ninety-five percent of our students haven't completed the diagnostic thus far. These are the results for now. And look at their... Okay, so, there's two graphs. The top line of each graph is the result of the second diagnostic. There's more green there. That is very good. You can look at the specific numbers on your own. Just notice more green and less red, okay? That means we are moving. And this is a brand-new assessment for us. We are really working towards making sure that our students are meeting the forty minutes weekly weekly in reading math, and the more that we do that, the more acceleration we're going to see.
Hi, my name is Ake, I'm in 2nd grade, this is my dad.
Here. Hold on, sorry.
Sam!
So, we track that until the worst of this, and, I mean, I still don't see anything. So, um, I have to click to keep this going better, right? Uh, this is round technology.
Click, that one you said was auto.
Alright, so here we go, we have two little kids who are looking at you about how to track their progress as well.
Hi, my name is Ake, I'm in 2nd grade, this is my dad. Here, here's where I track my attendance. This is my reading checklist. Um, I already did a little beginning, and I need to work on transitions and endings. Uh, this is where, uh, snack list, snack list. This is where I track, uh, snack list, 228 snack lists. Here's my post for writing. Uh, I'm reading them good, I'm sounding the words, I'm reading, I need to work on breaking the block of words, to work on it, I plan to clap out the syllables. So, my goal for this period is end.
Hi, my name is Robyn, this is my 2nd grade dad folder, and here's where I track my attendance. This is my opinion writing checklist, and, and I'm very, I'm very good at my organization. I need to work on my, um, beginning transitions and endings. Okay, so this is where I track my snack list, and then 228 and 228 snack lists. I'm reading them good, I'm reading hard words, reading, I need to work on understanding a few vocabulary words that I don't really understand. To work on it, I need to look at glossary, or maybe like look at the words and pictures and kind of clues around these skills, they actually mean. Here's my math. When we're doing adding and subtracting, I'm very good at multiplication, and I, um, need to work on like not rushing for my exit tickets because I can know, because I know I can do it in my math lessons. My fall reading letter score was Q. My goal for the winter was R. My winter reading score is R, and my goal for the spring is S. I can't wait to keep tracking my goals.
Sorry, I'm talking too loud. We have a part that's locked in. Um, if you have a white pack, you're old, that's you be, J.P., tell D4C me. Wait, wait, wait. Thank you for the effort. Ebony, you gotta come back, okay? One of our goals is to also get to student-led conferences, we're not there yet, but the work that we do in the classroom will lead that, will, will lend that to students being able to speak at the parent's conferences.
I appreciate you.
I appreciate you, so, thank you for talking to me. Alright, moving on, um, so, in kindergarten, kindergartners learn so much, but one of the greatest things they need to learn is the letters, but not only do they need to be able to, uh, identify the letters, but they also need to be able to know the letter sound and the letter formation of all 26 letters to own the letter. It used to be, oh, okay, they, they know what that letter is, but they didn't necessarily have the sound about, and they weren't able to necessarily draw. So, we, you know, the standards are always rising, and our children are meeting that, and right now, 58% of our students have met the goal of the 26 letters, owning them. So, we are thrilled that, you know, the teachers continue to assess and make decisions about how and what to teach, and different ways to teach to get the children to learn, um, clearly the letters and the sounds and to draw. Snack words, snack words are those high-frequency words, the words that you know in a snap, the words that are always, um, often seen in the books at third reading and the levels that they're at. So, uh, we took a look at our, our, um, first and second grade, and they just finished assessing this month, January's a very busy month of assessment, and, uh, 73%, 3% of our students' grades wanted to score above benchmark on knowing those snack words. The more words you know, the more you can read and comprehend text, so that's another very important, um, data point so that we can get kids to comprehend text. So, Fatsenell Benchmark Assessment is another district assessment, and this is where we are looking at how students read orally, how accurate their oral reading is, what strategies they use to figure out unknown words, are they skipping it, are they sounding it out, are they looking at the word, the sentence around the word to figure out what that word means, there's so many different strategies that they are taught by their teachers to read. And then there's the comprehension piece, well, we can read something, but if we really understand it, and to what degree do they understand it? And you're seeing that we are moving higher into getting more kids reading at Level Two and Level Three. Uh, you might say, well, why aren't there some, they're not, you know, they're going down to Level Four? So, we see Fatsenell be there, she said that she was at an S and she was still at an S. There are so many levels and so many skills that you need to acquire at a level of text. You know, you have to be able to analyze and synthesize and evaluate at S. So, you might be limited at S a little bit longer, but also there's a chart that as you're moving along, so sometimes you're not moving along at the same rate as the chart exact expects. So, you can hang out, you might start off at Four, but if you stay there, oh, then you're maybe a Three, and actually, no, I mean, that could be a whole other conversation, but I'm sure you don't want to know that. So, that's, that's, you know, in case you're wondering why. So, uh, the teachers are like constantly doing running records in addition to the Fatsenell benchmarking, they're constantly taking the pulse, where are our children? Because you can't just test three times a year and think that your lessons that you're creating and the small groups that you're doing are meeting the needs of all the children, because there's so many different ranges of needs and knowledge, and they're constantly changing, they're constantly changing, um, small groups and making decisions based on yesterday's work and what the children were, so that we're just, you know, taking as much time as possible to hit the targeted skills that the children need. Alright, social emotional development. It's last, but it's really first. We have to have our children coming to school that resonate and feeling like they have people that love them, like our children here just telling us. Um, they have to know that, that it's a safe haven here and that the people that, the adults that are in the class, our school, um, are there for them. So, we have an amazing, uh, social emotional team here, they're just wonderful, and they work every single day, our teachers and our, and our students. Um, every morning, they're, they, they have like two regals each, every morning, they're going to each classroom, and they're checking in with the children, and the teachers were to check in, but they're like, to help, and then our family lunchroom, like this is an example, Mrs. Sawyer, she's our guidance counselor. And she's having lunch, but there are different lunches that are offered every single day to meet the different needs of our children based on what's going on, um, with them. Uh, we use zones of regulation, you know, Friday Day, and we will, to, or learn some total sort of stuff, so they can stay in, and enjoy what is the best way for us to support our children. Sabers, Sabers is an assessment of our students' emotional well-being, we do that three times a year as well. We just did our second administration. No. No, I take that back. Sabers has happened now. We are preparing here, Spring '24, when the children left at the top, and Fall '24. Our children left at 83.3%, and they entered at 83.44%, which means, okay, there's like high-risk, medium-risk, low-risk. 83% of our children are at low risk for having social emotional issues based on this assessment, which is wonderful, because the next chart shows you Fall '23, 73% of our students were at low risk. Now, this year, 83% of our students are at low risk. So, we're seeing improvements because of some of the to come activities that we're implementing to support our students' whole person.
Hi, I'm a little, I'm in 1st grade.
Yeah, sorry, go on.
No, my baby, don't you put her up there.
Please, feel the water. Only has two slides. I'm a child of a father, I'm the principal of this in this School 18. Um, every year I talk about toothpaste, I talk about discipline, and I talk about attendance. Two things near and dear to me takes up my entire day, discipline and attendance. Okay, so a couple of attendance, well, we can't because then she'll talk. Alright, okay. So, uh, yes, so a couple of highlights, uh, from attendance perspective, we're holding steady at 93% attendance. Um, would I like to see it go higher? Sure I would, but you know what? We're holding steady, and with all the sickness we've had this year and, uh, this cold weather, I'm unhappy with the 93. Historically, our kindergartners have the highest absentee rate, and this is something that I talk to you, every year I come in and I say, those kindergartners, we're really about to work hard with those kindergartners, because I think a lot of parents feel it's just kindergarten. This year, our absences are at this time compared to last year, we have 91 less absences in our kindergarten cohort. I am absolutely ecstatic about that, and I really believe all our efforts in working with the families and getting them to understand how important that year is. I am confident, and I really look forward to tracking that cohort, to see how that lends itself to their social emotional and cognitive growth, because I think it's sort of game-changing, um, that they're here, um, and, and doing that. I need to do a shout-out, um, to our attendance support specialists who is here tonight, and to those of you, where's Vicki? Alright? And to those of us, right? Those of you who supported our call, because I really believe that those two things have just totally changed the game, and have really been a big boost to do so much more in getting these children to school, um, and having that extra person making those home calls, making those home visits, um, has really been wonderful. We have almost decreased our critically absent students by several percent compared to last year this time, and that's a big one, because those critically absent students are the ones that stayed trapped for us, and that's coming back to us every single time. So, I'm really thrilled about that, and I, um, I appreciate the support, because prior to the car, prior to Vicki, I was a little out of it myself, and, um, it has been really wonderful to have that extra support. Um, this is the highlight of mine, I introduced to you my friend Elizabeth, and for anyone who doesn't know about Elizabeth, is she came to us as a kindergarten from last year. Prior to that, she was in 3K. While in 3K, she missed 100 days of school, okay? 100 days of 3K years. She came, was a kindergarten, and we had a bigger challenge. We were challenged working with mom and getting her to understand, um, the needs of her to be in school, helping her deal with the challenges that were keeping her from getting to school. Uh, she was socially emotionally behind, she was academically weak behind. This child is now excellent in first grade, and the child that you're going to see is not the child that you're going to see in kindergarten. Um, I do want you to notice her jewelry. It was very important that she knew she was getting a film that she looked appropriate. Um, so, we're going to share Elizabeth with you, and, um, this works my heart like in and at. That's not Elizabeth.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth, I'm in first grade, I doubled my days since kindergarten. I got 100 on my math test, and I leveled my snack list. I love coming to school because I love my teacher and friends, it's cool.
Love her. What she told you initially was, I doubled my days. So, what she's saying is, is I doubled by watching her tracker, working with the tracker, she can see that she has doubled the number of days that she had from last year, which is probably about triple what she had in 3K. But I will say this, Elizabeth is just one example of the many that are really sharing this wonderful success, um, and it's, it's really awesome to see, so, um, that's my Elizabeth, okay? Love her. Alright, um, let's go right into discipline, um, to be short and sweet with discipline. Uh, we are continuing to decrease our number of all the curls, um, and that is, as Jimmy said, that is a team effort. This is not me decreasing the curls, it's not me just downplaying them, it's everybody getting involved in addressing what the students need and how to come on the right track. Um, relationships, communication, and collaboration, parent communication in meetings, PBIS, character education, in-school supports, though, you know, we've, uh, joined the other schools, my brothers keeper, the lunch groups, the second step. Um, this year, we have the introduction of the Stronger Connections Mentoring Program, which has been phenomenal, uh, and really added to the needs of individual, uh, students. Um, I want to echo Jimmy one last time in saying that this is a team effort, uh, we are all in at School 18 in finding out what our children need, what the students, what their parents need, uh, dealing with the challenges, um, and I'm going to be more proud of the world that's happening, uh, at our school, uh, and more, more pleased with, with these lovely people that come every day, because they're the ones in life doing it every single day, and I'm just really on the outside supporting them, so, um, thank you, and, uh, yes, well done. Alright, so there you go. So, the social emotional support, go on, we're going to cover that. Just so you know, all of our children are tracking their attendance every single day, and then two surveys, metrics, performance, inspections, we do like other sources tracking as well, so, and, uh, again, our social emotional team works certainly with our children in addition, so if you're a security support, your children get, so, everyone gets, um, people services person coming to check in on them every day, but shares with your three children, they will get individually, for some, or lunch with, or attendance support, or, you know, food on the weekend, or snacks, so, they're just something that the base that works on a supportive social emotional. So, now, the goal of practice up with ethne. So, this is our ethne goal for this year, our ethne goal is focused on our Black African-American students, we want them to be, um, having increased academic achievement and proficiency rates on their New York State exams. So, we talked, you just heard about reduced absenteeism, so I'm not going to talk any further more about that. Family engagement, so, we have community outreach, we go out to some of the communities where we have more families that can't get here, we make home visits, we talk about the vehicle, we have parent conferences, or constant communication, we'll go to their homes, we have healthy events here for our families. So, that's for our family engagement. And then, equitable resources, the academic after-school tutoring, we have targeted our children of this cohort, they were the first students to get the tutoring, um, that is so that they get that two to three times the extra instruction outside of the day as well during the day, and we have, we can event up tutoring, we have, it's the backpack program, and, um, our libraries. The libraries that we have in these buildings, I'm sure you've seen them all, we continue to always add more culturally relevant books so that children continue to see themselves in, in those books, but also see others and learn about others, and it's so important that those, those supplemental materials are the ones that they love, that they hug, that they sit in the, on the rug with, and they take home. That's building the love of learning when they have books that they can really enjoy. So, thank you again for always supporting that, and, yeah, stronger connections, again, that was opened up to our students in this sub-group that we were targeting to increase their equity and opportunity to be, um, on grade level and proficient, so, there you go. And, tonight's demonstration says it all. Here you can read all of the varieties of ways that we offer opportunities outside of the school day to our children. Um, I remember when we didn't have after-school programs, I mean, like sports programs, we got grade three, four, five kids, they loved it, we have 25 kids, and sometimes we, oh, we do, we sneak in maybe 27 and 28, just because it's hard to, you know, turn the children away, so, the gym is full every day out of the school, and our children are really enjoying that, and, um, all of the And all the other things here, I know that is a little known thing, but we are so appreciative for the opportunities that are offered to our children all year. And then there's, we're going to end with these three little girls. I can't take it, or one of them is going to start walking. They're just telling me what they love about School Eighteen, and what I love about School Eighteen are all the people that work here at School Eighteen, work together, and come and bring it every day for our children. And I am thankful for each of you at the table for always supporting us and listening and doing what's best for kids. So, we'll end with three children telling me what they like about School Eighteen, and I thank you for your time this evening. All right, what's your favorite thing about School Eighteen?
My favorite thing about School Eighteen is that it's very spread.
My favorite part of School Eighteen is that I love my teachers and I love my staff.
All right, what's your favorite thing about School Eighteen?
My favorite thing about.
My favorite part about School Eighteen is that it's hard to miss.
Thank you, Ginny. Good job. I was wondering if the teachers at School Eighteen or the staff, the staff at School Eighteen, could stand up, tell us who you are and what you do for School Eighteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, I'm Sanlo, third grade teacher here at School Eighteen, and I love teaching here.
Oh, right.
Hello, Victoria Neto, I'm the attendance improvement specialist here at School Eighteen.
Hi, I'm Olivia Schroder. I'm a special education teacher here at School Eighteen.
Hi, I want to have to go and get a great picture of you.
Hi, I'm Bianca Luddy. I'm a teaching assistant. Sam Brown, special ed teacher.
I'm Shabat Fowles. I teach first grade. I've been here since day one with Ginny, and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else.
I'm Laurel Dunn, second grade.
Sophia, I'm a new first grade teacher, and it's my third year in first grade. I absolutely love it. I love working for change, Dawn.
She's the one who's going to teach them.
Hi, I'm Shyam. I'm a second grade teacher.
Hi, I'm Latire. I am the new secretary.
I'm Lauren LeBelle. I'm a grade teacher. I'm currently here.
As board members, we see the names. We don't see the faces. We're not necessarily in the school. So, thank you. Does anybody have some questions?
I should run, or, sorry.
You ask, you answer, I'm going to say.
Gee, so this is, I haven't had a chance to teach before. Excellent job. What's your biggest challenge, and what do we need to do as a board that's scoring over?
I don't have a biggest challenge.
Yeah.
So, what, what awards? I think, I think you support us whenever we come, sometimes with little things.
Yeah.
All right, so sometimes it's the little things that we appreciate you listening to and responding. Like, it used to be books. We used to be a book desert. Maybe you've heard that before. We're no longer. Now, we are a rich oasis in every single building. And that, you know, again, like the cars. I just think, you know, keep giving us food for our children, you know? We always need, they always need food and snacks, as we say. Maybe snacks, snacks. You could give us more snacks. That, I'm being serious. We would like more snacks these days. Bar children, not across. Thank you, brows.
I guess there's the other thing for the board, considering I hear you talk about the Kids First program and sneaking kids in. I think even being able to sneak in two additional kids meets the goal. I mean, these kids up here are the next leaders, right? I mean, you can see the confidence. So, whatever we can do from a board to try and pour more resources into that program with a lot of these kids, that extracurricular, social, emotional stuff, I think we should really think about. Seems like an awesome program. Those kids are super impressive, so.
Yeah, it's great work, and they were impressive when I got here. So, one of the things we are, as I said, as the board tried to record, we're trying, one of the things that I learned when I came here to watch was these kids get blue belt, we had one yellow belt, and then they get to middle school and stops, right? And so, we're going to try to add a middle school strength. So, actually, Tony Butler, who's nationally known, sets that, is going to teach the class implementation, so he's going to do it himself. So, yeah, we're hopefully trying to understand.
So, great job.
Our meeting won't be long. You guys are the long part.
So, this week, the board of board members passed along through the board review all accounts that I can set up. W2 was thrown out earlier this week. I got 109 hours in the mail today. I stuffed all of them myself. We had our internal audit meeting this month. I think it went pretty well. The preliminary report said it was doing pretty well. With great sense that it stretched back to the 22, 23 school year. We will pass all those reports under that. I wanted to thank my staff, Chris Beamen and Nicole Daven for gathering all the information that the process was moving to. And, that is the end.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion on the floor for approval of minutes janitor against 2025, second discussion. All those in favor, oppose. Superintendent recommendations, human resources staff act, unclassified, classified. Under unclassified, motion on the floor for consent agenda items 1 through 13. Second. Under discussion. I have a statement to read. Very awkward.
Sorry.
I know. Okay, Troy City School Board, as president, I shared my statement. The Troy City School District extends its deepest gratitude to Dr. Watson for her exceptional service, leadership, and dedication over the past few years. We wish her nothing but the best as she begins this well-earned new cap. I can't do the speech. I don't know, but I would just say thank you for the joy of the extent to work with all of you. Thank you so much. I have to work with you all for one whole year, so I thank you, students at school. You're breaking up a great team. Hopefully, I can do one more presentation for her. I'll get it to speak. Can't we do it virtual? Thank you all so much. Also, under discussion. We have a retirement, and we have a tenure. Sam? I want to congratulate, congratulations, welcome to our family. All those in favor, I oppose. But here it's really boring. Under classified, motion on the floor for consent agenda items 1 through 3. Second. Discussion. All those in favor, I oppose. Under superintendent recommendations program, motion on the floor for consent agenda items 1 and 2. Second. Discussion. All those in favor, I oppose. Under superintendent recommendations business planning, motion on the floor for consent agenda items 1 and 2. Second. Discussion. All those in favor, I oppose. District announcements, our future board meetings will all be, will take place at 6 o'clock. When you were at that, it would be in middle school, and the board in '26 would be in parallel. Good news. Several parallel students have an art or future in the freshman year. We are staying with Dr. Martin, the junior student art and essay exhibition. School 16 will again host Junior Achievement Day in a day, no, Junior Achievement in a day on January 24th. Next week, School Eighteen will host families for PTA family paint line led by art teacher, Merriam-Lee. Last week, seniors at Troy High heard from Glenn Merrick from the New York State Littler Brothers Union about careers and trades. Our modified boys basketball team is undefeated with a record of 70. Whoa, I wonder if you know somebody on that. And the CBA Troy Columbia boys team broke a 35-year cool record last night in their meet against Anthony County. Congratulations. Is there anything else? So. The meeting's over.
At the last meeting, we were talking about a retreat. After retreat, we played a pitcher. And we had a winning team. I must have one board member with a perfect score when he was drawing. So, I forgot the prizes that morning, but I've since purchased them. So, the winning team was Emily, Dottie, and Hannah. And the perfect draw was that flowers.
Okay, Ginny, thank you, thank you to our audience, and help it out, and. Motion on the floor to adjourn. Second. Congratulations. Stay there, please, please.